Ten o'clock meeting of July third. We're only running one meeting this week with the Fourth of July, so everything will be done today. With that, will you please silence or shut off your cell phone? Join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. So, I think I know what happened. You know, there's an imbalance with this table, and so everything is tilted and it kind of runs downhill, and that's why you had that accident.
A lot of things have ran downhill over the years. Okay, we do have a deletion off of our agenda. Charlie Pike had a different commitment today, so he used the way. Is there any other additions or deletions?
None.
All right, so we're gonna try to rock it through this. Darwin has another meeting, so come on up, Darwin. Let's, uh, non-disturbance agreement. And just a little bit of overview, Darwin and I've had some discussion yesterday. The non-disturbance agreements seem to be maybe a little bit more often than not, and I think we're both in agreement that for land and the planning department's okay, but we need to probably make sure that we have a process that these get fully filed and fully recorded. So after he gives his definition or whatever of these, I think there's three actually, Darwin.
There's three today.
Three for today. And I think if we make a motion that it needs to be with the requirement of a recording being done, the cost of the recording being done by the applicant.
Yeah.
Because if these aren't recorded, you know, they're for forty years.
Yeah.
They sort of get lost in the mix of the world.
Well, I think on that tenth term, you probably will forget by then.
Well, Melanie will be here for forty years. She's only twenty-one years old, so she'll still have a year to go to retirement at sixty-two.
There you go.
Anyways, Darwin, with all that said, you go ahead.
Yeah, with all that, so, there's been a couple emails that have gone out to Nony, Dave, myself, from Drew McMahon, and on to legal counsel. The last meeting in which you discussed these non-disturbance agreements here and then do, I've already three other agreements. I gave you guys, hopefully you haven't found me a copy of a map, but it shows six listed with the reference numbers, those spoken pages where mineral rights were recorded or road rights were recorded existing in the county's ownership, so that we're now at this point where this company, Newsont Energy, is asking for these non-disturbance agreements so that they can continue on with moving forward their solar projects that have been approved for land use, or that may be soon approved for land use. I'd say maybe as they've got four different solar projects approved, and as they continue on in their solar projects, they often find other issues as they haven't done all their research, like for cultural studies and things like that, so they may move one of their projects to one of these Kittredge projects in the near future. So Darwin, when that happens, and we approve these non-disturbance agreements, if they don't actually build upon those, do they just throw away that agreement? So the agreement's in place unless through the contract you cancel the agreement. There's a cancellation clause in here, I'm sure, I'm not sure which page, but it's on, it's one of the eight, seven or eight-page documents that you have that language. These agreements are simply, in my mind, not me, you know, having studied these agreements in great depth, but essentially, we own rights that they want us not to use for a given period, which in this case is forty years, so that the life of the solar project could go undisturbed while on the ground, or in the process of development, or reclamation in this case as well. So, they really don't need anything from us other than this agreement. So, like Brad said, or Commissioner Warner said, if we enter any of these agreements, they need to pay the cost to have it recorded, and then there would be legal language in here to say how we get out of that, if for any reason we decided we needed to get out of the agreement.
Okay.
If the project wasn't built. We may want to do that, something that we entertain at just about time, but this is a pre-step for them, pre-construction step for them, and pre-financed step that they need to take. And legal counsel has what these, I was involved, you know, a few months ago when we gave a red line, we, the requestor gave you a red line version of language from the Obsidian Renewables original non-disturbance agreements. Their legal counsel, our legal counsel, will review that as a draft document that could be used as a template. This again is just changing ownership names and legal descriptions, but it's essentially the same documents you guys entered into previously. Well, tell me if I'm reading this wrong, but it doesn't look like we're going into agreement with Newsont, we're going into agreement with his land owners.
With the surface owner.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And that is probably most appropriate as in those surface owners in there in the agreement.
Yeah.
But Newsont's the requestor of this, as they've sent it, or maybe half of those land owners that they're working with.
Well, the reason why these come along is as these developments happen for investors and for financing, they have to have this clause in there to bill, make them finance, pay their financing. Under term and binding effect, it does talk in there about the surface owner ceases any ongoing land operation of the solar facility and has all of the equipment and things removed. So, if at any time the lease agreement or whatever goes away, this agreement goes away also.
Okay, so that answers that question. Okay?
All right, so we have three different ones to do.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the non-disturbance and subordination agreement between Lake County and Kenneth and Leslie Hufford Trust as presented.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the non-disturbance agreement as said. Would you like to add that they have to be recorded in the cost reporting?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion will have, will be recorded at the cost of the applicant. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. One.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the non-disturbance subordination between Lake County and Scott and Janet Kittredge, otherwise listed here as the Kittredge Relocable Trust with the same stipulations.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then we have a second one with the Huffords. I'll make a motion that we approve this additional non-disturbance and subordination agreement between Lake County and Kenneth and Leslie Hufford with the same stipulations for.
All right, motion's been made, I second, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Darwin.
Yep.
Can you figure out this?
Okay, Darwin.
And then you'll follow up.
Yep.
With legal counsel on this. Melanie, if you do anything, make sure she's in the loop. And thank you.
Have a safe trip. Yep.
All right, now we have Mr. Jake Greer and Lily.
I would also give some department updates as well besides.
Absolutely.
So we'll start with Lily since she's here. So, while we were enjoying Memorial Weekend, a three-day weekend, the family's Lily was traveling to Salem to attend the Basic Propagation Academy. She left on Sunday night twenty-seventh, and graduated this last Friday, June twentieth. So for five weeks, Lily went through some really training, represented Lake County very well. All the reports I received from the academy, besides the updates I got from Lily on weekly, excuse me, weekly basis, were going. Lily represented Lake County very well. Going back a little bit, which speaks loudly of Lily's character and the representation she provides, knowing for Lake County, but for our department as well. Very, very rarely are there those folks in our community, communities, that propose the question, what do I have to do to get to the next level? So we put some thought into that, we sit down and meet and say, well, here are some basic things we have to do in order to get to the next level. Very rarely does anybody follow through because they see that list as daunting and too time-consuming, interferes with personal life and things, other things that happen. Lily is a rare example of that. Lily took that list and accomplished everything she needed to do in order to, one, be hired in that position, or her current position is an adult probation officer, but she also accomplished several tasks to get to the academy. She had the work cut out for her, she did it with a smile on her face, and she accomplished every single thing that's been asked, well, not asked of her, but it was just listed out there. It's nothing that I personally, you may dream, but it was just things that had to happen in order, the nature of the business, Lily accomplished every single thing on that list. So, it's a privilege and an honor to present Lily to the board commissioner as a graduate of the Basic Propagation Academy five hundred seventy-seven. She did very well. Lake County was very, was very well represented at the academy. There was ten or eleven of us, including her husband, that made the trip up to watch her graduate. And it was, was a moving experience watching Lily move across the stage and receive her diploma, which should take a bit of education at the academy. So, with that said, Lily graduating, she's back to work and set the groundwork. So, it's a pleasure to have her back, and it's an honor to be able to work with Lily.
Wow. So Jake, well said on many fronts, but especially to kind of outline how involved this is, what kind of commitment it takes, and we've all known Lily to be a hard charger and an overperformer, but it sounds like this, this was an exceptional effort on your part, and you were to be more than congratulated, so, thank you.
No, it's easy to be at the academy and, you know, be in the Portland metropolitan area, the Salem area, the Wildland Valley, because you can go home on weekends and see your family, you can go home at night if you want to see your family. Lake County, we're six and a half hours away from the academy.
Yeah.
So those late nights and early weekend, early mornings trying to get home and get back, those are hard to come by. So, there was some great sacrifices, just not on Lily's part, but her husband's part as well, because five weeks apart, that's a long time. It's a long time. There's a whole new normal for both, for Lily and her family, a whole new norma for five weeks. So, it's a daunting task to take on. Not that we're old by any means, but already five weeks removed from your family is not even good set.
Jake, with a tad bit of perspective calling upon my past life, when you go on a wild land fire, which can be anywhere, you go for a maximum of two weeks, and it's hard, it's hard work, and it's hard being away from home and family, and as you said, to do it for five weeks, it's just amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I couldn't say it any better than Jake, for you to start out at the county and the upward mobility that you've been able to accomplish to start out here, and you pushed yourself with opportunity, and you just continued to do that. And Lily, one thing I love about you is your attitude and the way that that's catching for the rest of us here. And I've told you individually that I'm so proud of you, but the one thing that wasn't mentioned, whether you wanted to mention or not, that you were part of the color guard also, and that's, that itself is very prideful. Can't say enough. We, we need employees like you to surround us. It just makes us all better people, so thank you so much. And Jake, he nailed it whenever he said, gave you the opportunity, you took it, and you have to do that on your own. It's not somebody else doing it, so I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
And I also think we'd be remiss, Jake, to not acknowledge your leadership in that department over the number of years you've been here, and the quality staff that you have, that's not accidental. So, thank you as well. Thank you for supporting Lily. And just so you don't make this mistake, Lily, in that upward mobility, don't ever think one of these positions is a move up. You can do it well, but it might be a step backwards.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kimberly.
Yes.
Welcome home.
Good to be home.
Yep.
Thank you.
And you have an update also, department update.
Yeah, I have a couple of different updates. On the adult side of community justice, this month of July, going back a little bit, when we sign our intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Corrections for funding, and that says, we will undergo a review by Department of Corrections. One, to make sure we're spending our money, like we say, we're spending our money, that we're doing the things that are passed of us as far as our assessments and case plans, our contacts, meeting with our clients, hold our clients accountable, utilizing our sanctions, our structured sanctions that we have, and the ability to use, should we need them, but also rewarding positive behavior, supporting our programs, and supporting overall change for our clients. So, it was back in, that was back in the fall of twenty seventeen, Department of Corrections asked for some volunteer counties, because Department of Corrections oversees two counties. Those two counties were automatically thrown down pod. So, New Matilla County, for medium-sized county, volunteered. Marion County, for a large county, volunteered to go through this review process, and Lake County, I volunteered. I volunteered for many reasons, but the main reason is, I've been a, I've been here for five years, lived over five years. I wanted to know, I know the good things we do, I know some things, some things we need to work on, and we're addressing those, but I also want to hear from an outside agency, a neutral agency, of really, where are our gaps? So I volunteered. So July is our month where we're being reviewed currently. We have five files that we need to make copies of, some different work in the files, and send to Department of Corrections so they can review that process, make sure we're reviewing our processes, like we do our construction sanctions, our paperwork. And my hope is, we get a good, it's because it's a highlight, because historically, the state, the OARs, said Department of Corrections should review annually. Well, there's thirty-six counties, so I use squeezing annual review where thirty-six counties on top of all the other work they do. Legislation, legislation changed that to every two years, starting, I believe, in January nineteen. So to try and get the process smoothed out so the directors and counties aren't anxious, and there's no anxiety or no hidden agendas with that, there wasn't a pilot test for five counties, the two ULC counties and the three volunteers. So, their review in August, the month of July, it's Marion County and Lake County are both going to be reviewed this month. And I looked at it as a positive. They're not gonna throw the book at us and tell us everything we're doing wrong, they're gonna point out better ways of doing business, so I see it as a win-win. One, the board commissioners are gonna have, give you a copy back, we're gonna talk about that August seventh and eighth, or first meetings in August. Jeremiah Stromberg, who's the assistant director for Department of Corrections that oversees community corrections, he's gonna be in town, he has a couple meetings at Warner Creek that he's gonna be involved with, but I've invited him to come to the board meeting to talk about the review process, but also talk about the state of community corrections. I have a really good working relationship with Jeremiah, so he was, he was pleased and privileged to be able to come speak in August. So I'll have him on the agenda for August.
Very good.
But I, but with that said, like meeting here for five years, I want to know how we can continue to do business, and we are, but how we can also do business better, and where some of our gaps are.
I'll just say, Jake, that's very commendable, and I think that's very proactive and the right thing to do, and applaud you for stepping up and volunteering.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's coming up this month, so in August, depending on how long it takes to then generate the report, my hope is that it's prepared for him to come, he's prepared to come and talk about that.
Good.
With that said, our initial review for my office community corrections, we're also undergoing a, it's a CPC, which is a correctional program checklist, all our programs that we utilize, that we refer our tenders to, our clients to, that are also, because we give them state dollars, essentially state dollars, we need to review their programs to make sure they're working as they say they're working, and it's utilizing them in space practices, so the best possible practices out there, they're utilizing to affect the best change on our clients.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt you, but if you wouldn't mind, and I'm sure you've already thought of this, please make sure you include the workforce program that you've invested in. And I say that because I've been asked by Heather and the state folks in late September to attend over in Eugene, a workshop, the state workshop, and I haven't shared that yet, it just came out last week, to talk about counties that are being proactive in their workforce vision. And I think, even though we haven't skinned that cat completely, I think so many things that we're doing here, and it's not me doing, it's people like you doing, Jake, seeing the value to those that you work with through a workforce program to rehabilitate and educate and get them back into the workforce and meaningful work is so important. And from the workforce folks, Lake County's one of the few that are doing that, so I think you need to be sure you point that out when the folks are here.
I will do that. Most definitely, most definitely. So we had these reviews done, I want to say in two thousand fourteen. At the time, it was, we were undergoing some different changes over there because the former director was leaving, so we never really tied up loose ends on some of the programming deficiencies, but the report was out there, so I was able to work through time on, based on the report that I received. But we're gonna, we're gonna gear up for reevaluating our programs that we currently are using, so we can be proactive and make sure they are the best of the best, and we're giving the best bang for our buck, and there's a return for our investment. That's the big key. We're spending money on programming on our clients, for our clients, I want to make sure we're giving the best bang for our buck, and the clients are receiving the best bang for their buck, for our buck. So, that'll include the wellness center, because they do our mental health, substance abuse, and our moral recognition therapy. That'll also include Terry Jones, Family Counseling Solutions, who provide our sex offender treatment and our battle intervention program. So that's, that's gonna be coming up, someone to be working with those folks on schedule and time to do that. And I guess a benefit to having those down here and have me working with the programs to get above where we need to be, I've been part of the review CPC evaluators. I've trained in that, I've helped, I've helped undergo programs, I'm like, oh, CPCs, as an evaluator. I'm gonna step back and I'm gonna evaluate our programs, because I want to be able to use the report we get on working with our programs to get above that bar. Also, some things that come up in those reviews, programs don't like to see or hear, no one likes to be criticized, but they, the Department of Corrections doesn't try and criticize programs, it just tries to say this is your inefficiencies. Take it or leave it, it's pretty criticism. So, I want to be able to work through that hand in hand, because we contract with these folks, I want to be able to work through those deficiencies either.
So Jake, you're hitting on something that I've grown to have a little bit of passion about, and that's, you know, I've talked to you about the stepping up program through NACO, really encourage you to look at that website and see if I can help there, it takes the partnership and everything, but we have a lot of people just continuing to go through our jail, just continuing, and so I commend you for trying to find ways to make things better. I think there's opportunities when people are in our jail, or even in prison, that these people can get help. And so, as you're going through this review and thinking about that, reflect on some of that, it's a good tool to look at. We haven't started that program here, haven't, and I'll get the energy behind it that I'd like to see, but you can review some of that, and it might give you some ideas, some places that we can maybe start making difference for those habitual offenders, I guess, is what I'm talking about, but I'm pretty encouraged about that. If there's anything I can help with that, you let me know.
Okay.
Lily didn't make the trip, you were tied up, asked great questions, and I think you got a team down there that really can look at some of the things that help some of these features.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And just a staffing update on our adult community corrections employee staff, we have Lily back. We recently worked through some of our grants and different things. Securing our grants, making our treatment court just that much, that much better, that much stronger. We also have a review from the federal government coming up in September, they're gonna sit through our treatment court, our staffing, and they're talking to individual clients, they're talking to individuals on our, that's part of our treatment court as far as staff goes, and then they're gonna give us a quick, down to thirty, kind of summary of what they saw, again, some things we need to work on, and some things we could probably change to tweak to make it just about as budget, no bill of more reports, right, it's coming up in September. Great things are happening in treatment court, we're down to ten right now, we have two residential treatment, but they'll be back soon, and they'll hit the grammar, they got to live up now. So, I'm pretty pleased with the work we're doing on the adult side. I mean, we're pleased with the work we're doing on the juvenile side, but just to summarize this, the adult community corrections office, we're doing real good work, I hope we're focused accountable, and we're playing nice in the sandbox with all of our community workers.
Good.
With the juvenile side, things, we can have one youth meditation, he's pending some major eleven crimes, we're working through the process to give him some residential treatment for some issues where he had, but otherwise, we're working well. It's sad that we had, over the last year, we've had three cases involving major eleven crimes. It's disheartening, but it's reality. We're not, we're not alone. I meet with juvenile directors all the time, and they, they face those, these same obstacles and these same issues in their community. It's damaging because there's all these victims involved, but... It's damaging because there's all these victims involved, but nevertheless, we're not alone. We're doing our due diligence to make sure everything is taken care of on the victim's side, but also that we're not looking to punish our juveniles, we're looking to rehabilitate our juveniles so they can get out and stuff. So do you have one individual?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
But I guess what I was gonna say Jake is whenever we end up with a kid that's utilized, a youth that's utilized, you might wanna put all three of us in the juvenile so, you know, because that's one thing that can end up being a budgetary thing if we go over the absolute number of that. I don't know, maybe the other two, I'm always interested in knowing that.
Absolutely. And oftentimes, the, the way to stay attention isn't always driven by the juvenile department. Because with Mitchell Leighton, we include the District Attorney's Office. And the judge also has a responsibility to, for public safety, victim's safety as well as client's safety and safety. So there's a lot of players involved besides juvenile. And we try, we have a good working relationship with our federal defense attorneys here in Lake County as well as our, our county services. And so we try and sneak things out and sneak things through, but doing it for the right reasons.
And emails not appropriate, just stop and let us know physically or whatever. We always sort of have that in back for mind. Then if we end up going over the days and we're going to contingency, we'll sort of have a little dip.
Staffing updates, we're fully staffed for the time being in the juvenile department. Buddy and Mary have both been on the ground running, Mary's been with us since mid-March. Buddy's been with us since October of 2017. They're doing great work, they're very active in the schools, very active in our alternative school. Just building those relationships with kids and being visible. The relationship building though is huge because our kids on, that we have on supervision or kids that we're working with, we work with all kids and build relationships with all kids. As the time comes that we are faced with an issue, we have that relationship that we communicate with kids and talk to kids and try and prevent it as well as proactive, trying to spirit out any issues that may come down the backboard that did come up in that picture.
You know Jake, when I went down here a month or so ago to the alternative school and classroom, I saw it firsthand, you know, Mark was there and the relationship that he, you know, and I know Buddy was having with Mary was developing. It, it reminds me of the old saying, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure. Because you could see them already, I mean, you know, it's not, it wasn't just that day. It was, they're seen a different way, they're seeing adults in the community care and they're people they can approach and talk to, you know. You don't ever know what you prevent, but you can tell we're preventing things and actually giving people hope for the future, young people. So.
Absolutely. Mark's gonna be Mark, much like Patty Barnhart, much like Kristen Collins. Mark is gonna be a big whole world, I mean, just because of his, his passion for the kids that are youth in our community, not just like me, but our county. He spends quite a lot of the time up north in Bayzley as well, working with equal numbers of kids. He's gonna be a big whole world because he's very well respected by the kids. He had an unfortunate situation happen last year in Houndsburg. A step-up program showed up.
Oh yeah.
Things out, things up and Mark was taken aback by that. When Ben retired, step-up program came down to a retirement program we had to go through.
Yep.
So just, just the working relationships that probably, Buddy and Mary played up on that and each other.
Yep.
Is phenomenal. So, and with Mark's position, as we know, Mark's becoming Commissioner January 1st. So his position will be open. My plan, my hope is to try and open that up in September, so it closes mid-October, October-ish. First of October, mid-October, so we can interview and try and have someone on board before Mark leaves. Because there's two or three months right there that Mark should rebuild the relationships with the kids. But I, I don't want Mark to be removed and have a new employee trying to rebuild those relationships. I see Mark pass up and on and make a smooth transition for, not only the youth, for our staff as well. Whether that may be.
I think that's a good idea.
Other than reported board asking for permission to do that because there'll be two-step working that position for another month. And I'd like that position to start mid-November because we have Thanksgiving in there and we have Christmas breaks. It's just gonna be in and out, traveling, schools are not getting sessions. So we'll have two, four solid months of more community kids, trying to pass up and on and smooth that transition up.
Yeah, I'm really supportive of that budget wise. We're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna fund, fund that because of your juvenile budget is, your investment size is pretty tight, I think, on, on that side of it. And even within other category, materials and services, I think it's pretty tight.
But we're, we're.
Work with AM and Steve or Rapp. I'm very supportive of that transition, especially with that position, it's very important.
I appreciate that.
So.
Thank you for sharing. So that's, that international, that's our department update. The last thing I have is the week of July 16th, or the week of July 15th through 21st is pre-trial probation supervision week. It's a time to honor and recognize all, all the staff in our department for the work they do. It's a national appreciation week and I think it's a worldwide appreciation week. So I have a copy of the proclamation, probably won't read that until that week, probably the 17th, which is Tuesday. But I'll probably be presenting this to the newspapers, so it runs in the paper the week before. So they, so we can understand that the.
Line full.
Yeah.
Need to have a copy.
Yeah, it starts on the 15th, our meeting's not till the 17th.
It's a Sunday, so our meeting's not until the 17th. So I've probably just, I've not, I haven't ready to go in the papers, so I'll try to go on that Wednesday. And the commissioners will obviously be this on Tuesday.
Should we do that proclamation now for that week? And then it could be the paper, they could run out at that time?
I think that'd be more appropriate.
Okay. So do you have copies of this?
We have, we have an addition, proclamation. So this is one of those I get to read, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we have an addition, a proclamation for the week of July 15th to the 21st. So I will read that proclamation. Lake County Board of Commissioners, proclamation, whereas Lake County community justice is an essential part of the justice system and whereas Lake County community justice professionals uphold the law with dignity, call recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity and whereas Lake County community justice professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile offenders in the community and whereas Lake County community justice professionals are training professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders and whereas Lake County community justice professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups and whereas Lake County community justice professionals promote prevention, intervention and advocacy and whereas Lake County community justice professionals provide services, support and protection for victims and whereas Lake County community justice professionals advocate community and restorative justice and whereas Lake County community justice professionals are a crew force for positive change in their communities. And now therefore be it resolved that we, Lake County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim July 15th through the 21st, 2018, as pre-trial probation and parole supervision week and encourage all citizens to honor these community justice professionals and recognize their achievements. So proclaim, so the paper would present it that week, we'd appreciate it, Michael.
Thank you for sharing. I'll get you a copy of this one.
Perfect.
So that week, July 17th, or excuse me, July 19th is a Thursday. That's gonna be our regularly held local public safety coordinating council meeting. But we're also gonna be recognizing our staff that day. And it's also happens to fall on Tasty Thursday as well. So we're, we're gonna have lunch that day and recognize staff and celebrate accomplishments of our staff.
Very good.
Our community justice professionals. So I would openly invite the Board of Commissioners, Melanie, to have lunch and celebrate the staff. And if you choose not to eat lunch and celebrate the staff, we're gonna, lunch will start at 11:30. Hopefully things will then add a little bit, quarter after 12, when we can conduct our merklish schedule meeting that day for local public safety and coordinating councilors, great work that needs to be signed and the order stuff for our, our grants that the council needs to review and approve. I would have some different things happening that week, just recognizing the staff and making them part of our hard work. But also gonna be inviting their spouses to that lunch as well. It's also a time to recognize their spouses. Much like Lily, her husband put a lot, put a lot on hold for a month and for five weeks while Lily was gone. The late nights and early mornings and weekend work that our staff do takes a toll on the families and about the family's support, their spouses' support. And we wouldn't be working as a well-oiled machine as we are. There's a lot, a lot of sacrifices, there's a lot behind the scenes for our staff, the level of service they provide to our, to our county. So their spouses are gonna be recognized as well and thanked for their, for the work that they do providing support for our staff.
That is excellent.
Yep. So with that said, that's, that's a wrap for my department update.
Great update, Jake.
Great update.
Yeah, really appreciate that page, so we'd love to hear it. So thank you very much. Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Melanie.
Thank you, sir. I have a picture, I have a picture of Lily receiving her diploma with the academy staff. Do you have an email address I can email that to?
Yeah.
Here, I'll just let you write it down.
So I got a proposal from ACTEC for the mitigation of migration, public health department to the hospital. And the total estimated project cost is $4,625. We'd like to have one of you send this contract to move forward with the bill. They've already changed over the public health building here. All of the domain names and emails have been converted. They will be on our internet for another week and then they'll be independent, anti-y's. Northways will be on our internet beginning of July. And I said that would be fine, just to make the transition as, as smooth as possible. We're going to put a door with this in that one office that will be a Lake County office strictly and will block the other access to public health. So, so if we have a review or inception, we'll pass that way. So everything's going as planned.
Great. So Melanie, within your budget, your, your technology budget, is where these dollars will come out?
Yeah, this wasn't anticipated, but I can make the point.
Okay. Entertained the motion?
I'll move that we approve the ACTEC Solutions' proposed plan to provide for the Public Health Department migration to the hospital and the cost associated to $4,625.
I'll second the motion, motion's been made and seconded to approve the Public Health Department migration to the hospital. Tech costs, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Getting a little fast there, Commissioner. You're getting a little fast.
And then so I have until July 10th to review this report of our 2017 award for the Wolf Depredation Grant. We were, we were awarded $600 for depredations and $10,000 for projects and we ended up spending all but $4,600 and we sent the rest back. We used the funds to buy cameras and equipment to track wolves and it's been successful so far. We've been able to capture a few different wolves in Lake County. So that's good, getting the aquas kind of confirmed and so far that's been great. We didn't have any depredation events last year.
So Melanie, when you say capture, do you mean literally capture or?
No, the capture images. So right now, we don't have any known aquas, they're just passing through as far as we can tell. So they're, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Gotcha.
They're, they're in the county, they're, they haven't set up shop in a specific area yet since the one up North West. So I'm almost done with that. And then we also, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife was awarded more money. So instead of the $2,000 for the 2018 award, we're going to be getting $6,000. So with those extra $4,000, we will be, or $6,000 total, $1,000, we will be trying to help landowners eradicate bone and carcass piles that could be an attractant to get someone to stay, get a wolf to stay in the area.
Pretty good.
And those dollars basically double their match for.
Yeah.
Dollar for dollar, if somebody has a bone pile that they need to cover up and have higher backhoe, for instance, they'll go dollar for dollar. They supply dollar, we supply dollar.
Yeah.
So try and stretch them further. If there's a really, really unusual situation and a landowner has no money, we can vary from then. That seems to be one of the best deterrents that ranchers can do, landowners.
And then I spoke to Nancy Pennington at the Soil and Water Conservation and we will be putting our wolf depredation, reducing attractant sample in the September issue.
Good.
So, so we'll get the word out and see if we can keep them from being permanent residents in Lake County.
They'll see if this isn't the place to stop because there's no.
There's no reason to.
No reason.
Yeah.
Go to those other counties where they have it all. Haven't been after it, working on it. So we also have meeting minutes?
Yeah, Melanie, you're right past that. So we'll go back up to meeting minutes. We have two sets, July 19th and 20th.
I'll move to approve. Meeting minutes of the 19th and 20th.
Okay, I'll second the motion, motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of June 19th and June 20th as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That's all we have on our agenda, if you have some liaison updates or not?
Well, you know, I have little mention, Commissioner, I gotta call Jonathan Sheffield back with NACO, our legislating assistant there. I, I've been on the Wildlife and Fire Leadership Council for the last 10 years or so and I will be stepping down and we're working on a transition plan. There's probably, well, there's a minimum of one more meeting out of 10. And that's probably gonna be this fall in DC as we meet usually in the fall back there. But I'll be transitioning with whoever the Western Interstate Region selects to fill that position. And I'm trying to work on, but I don't think the timing's right. As you know, we've been working on, we, me, Senator Wyden and his staff, without going into great detail because they're not ready for great detail to be discussed, but on a permanent solution, a mandatory permanent funding program for secure rural schools. And it's very, very hopeful that we can get this done. It'll be a national effort, as you know, there's 40 states that participate. It'll be a national effort, as you know, there's 40 states that participate in secure rural school funding historically, since the early 2000s, and it takes in 780 counties that benefit from that. So as they work through this, and the Senator works on his proposal on how this is going to be funded, and all of those details, they've asked if I would be willing to be involved in that, for some reason, they seem to think I have a passion for trying to get the solution for this, which I do, as you know. So that will be, yet to be determined, where and if, and how I would be involved in that on behalf of Lake County. And the last thing is what I mentioned when Jake was here, Heather Fink from our East Cascades Works Director for the 10th County Consortium has asked me, as well as the individual with the state, to be a participant in panel discussion. They wanted one county commissioner to talk about the value of the workforce organization on all the different aspects, and it is something that I think, you know, would be good to share with other county commissioners and other workforce providers out there to think a little bit out of the box than just the conventional way that it's been being done over the years. So that's in late September, I'll give the dates to Melanie when that gets confirmed, because I did ask them, you know, what day is that panel discussion, and I can't remember the gal's name, but replied back, but she said she'd be getting her that information, so. Anyway, that's it.
All right, I'll just do one real fast. Fourth of July tomorrow, our Fairgrounds is putting on the fireworks, the other events start at 2:00, you can go out by yourself a burger, there's bounce houses for little kids and young teenagers, there's two different bounce houses, there's other activities going on. There will be the Country Showdown later in the evening, and Tough Truck, and then you can enjoy the fireworks. Don't have, don't remember the cost of getting into the Country Showdown slash Tough Truck, but I think it'll be worth your time. Anybody around, want to go to it?
Sounds like a long time.
Yep. With that, we will adjourn at 5:00 to 11:00.